Linda, are we ready?
Yes.
At this time, we'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Klecker.
Here.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Chairman Ilert.
Here.
All are present. Susan, is this an action item today, or is it information?
This is for your information only. As part of our annual rate-setting process, or your annual rate-setting process for wastewater, we bring the capital improvement program for your information, and then we'll return in May with our financial plan. The capital improvement program is incorporated into that financial plan.
All right.
Okay? So, thank you very much for your time this morning. I appreciate it. Today, I have with me Aaron Witt, who is our chief engineer, and Patrick Bean, here on my right, is our asset manager. And so, they're going to do the bulk of the presentation today. I'm going to turn it over to Patrick to get us started.
Thank you, Susan. So, today, as we do every year, we're coming to present our capital budget. Overview what we're going to be covering is taking a quick look at our asset management plan and how we use that to develop our capital budgets, take a quick look at our five-year capital budget, and also take a look at that 25-year outlook to see what's coming down the pipeline. So, the asset management program has several goals, and some of those are listed here. The first is, we have old systems that need to be maintained, and we've been working to collect data on our systems to make decisions that will lead to realistic budgets. And we want to capture knowledge on our systems from long-term staff in ways that can be used for training of new staff. So, those are what we're really trying to focus in on with our program right now. So, like I said, we've really been focused in on using data to drive decisions on our system, and today, I'm going to walk through an example of that. In our collection system asset management program, we build an automated decision model for our repairs based on our experienced staff, how they would have recommended repair for those pipes. So, every pipe in our system, we have a next action programmed in to trigger a work order when that time comes. As part of the development of the model, we developed a structural risk score, which included both consequence of failure, how likely and likelihood of failure, which is based on the structural side. And we're able to use that to gather information with our well-trained staff to get information on our system, and this leads to a very consistent process, which yields high confidence in the scoring that we've developed. We then calibrated our model, and these pictures kind of show the spectrum of how we could have calibrated it. We could have spent a little bit of money and accepted a lot of risk, and those are those pictures on the left. Those are the ones where the pipes are at failure or already failed, but we wouldn't have spent a lot of money. We're just dealing with a lot of emergency repairs at that point. We could have spent a lot of money on it and addressed every little crack and defect that we found, but that doesn't let us get the maximum life out of our assets. Instead, we calibrated the model, one, to maximize the life of our assets while managing those high-risk pipes and address them before they hit failure, and this allows us to right-size our budget to repair the pipes before they collapse. When we started the asset management program, we were primarily focused on the structural issues. However, in parallel, we were completing an INI pilot study, where we're looking at infiltration and inflow, that groundwater and surface water that gets into our pipes, which eats up capacity, especially during wet weather events. We have now tied those together to address both issues as cost-effectively as we can. So, we're looking not just at the structural issues, which you can see on the left, where the pipe is cracking up, but also those wet-weather issues, where you see water coming in at joints and manholes. This lets us maintain our less than one overflow per hundred dry -- one overflow per hundred miles of pipe during dry weather compared to in the past, where we had up to 30 overflows per hundred miles. So, we brought it way down from the -- through the 80s, 90s, and into today. Before our formal asset management program really took hold, we'd identified approximately $400 million in collection system risk, but we didn't know the timing of when those pipes needed to be renewed or replaced. We didn't -- did the risk need to be addressed in five years, or 25 years, or even longer? Now, with the program we have in place, we have better understand the timing and include that right level in the CIP. So, with the current asset management program, we were able to develop a high confidence in understanding that risk in our system. We came to a projection of approximately $50 million over the next 10 years, and as the pie chart shows, only approximately 20% of the lines we've inspected need some sort of immediate repair. 80% of them need to be re-inspected based off the type of defects that we're finding. So, we're trying to -- also trying to understand how long those monitoring periods should be based. So, how soon do we come back and look at those pipes again that we're not fixing right now? And we evaluated hundreds of defects to see how quickly they deteriorate. And the two pictures you're seeing here are -- is an example of that. The pipe on the left and the pipe on the right are the same location in a pipe. In 2004, we'd identified some cracks that were there and didn't need to take an immediate action. However, when we came back in 2016, the pipe had failed and started eating away into the wall, where we had a missing pipe there. Those are the sort of defects we really want to catch before they get to this point, so that we're not having settlement and collapses of those lines. So, we'll be doing these sort of paired inspections for the foreseeable future to better refine that monitoring period. So, the next thing we'll be working through are manholes, and we've built our model and in the process of refining it. This is an example of a manhole inspection we're using as part of that process. So, this is kind of like Google Maps if you're driving around a little bit. So, it was just a video of it, but you can -- we can play these. We're moving. So, this actually shows us location and surface information from when we're starting our inspection. Then, we start drilling down into the manhole. It shows the frame and cover that need to be replaced. It shows the old brick manhole cone that needs to be rehabbed, and it shows the previous lining that was completed, but is starting to deteriorate again. In just a second, you'll see roots where they're starting to come through that need to be rehabbed to address those before they start breaking down the manhole even further. They also lead to further INI within the system, so we want to make sure that those manholes are sealed. This inspection is a tremendous tool for us. It saves time and money in that, once we have this, we have a snapshot in time for that manhole. We don't have to go back out and re-inspect it when we're going through and developing our rehab schedules and our projects. It also lets us look at where is that manhole now and where it'll be in the future, so we can do a similar sort of analysis that we do on the pipelines, once we start gathering enough of this information. Now, with a good handle on the gravity system, we can focus on some other areas. The first one being the low-pressure sewers, and we're going through right now, locating all the components, understanding the condition, and developing the true O&amp;M cost to maintain those assets. These are a smaller component of our system, so they were not as big of an issue, but we want to make sure we have these before they're at the point of failure. The final component are the force mains within our collection system. These are the high-risk assets, the transport, our flows from pump stations back up to the plants. We've now completed our first in-depth assessment of the Rock Creek Pump Station Force Main, and that's the picture on the right. We exposed that line and put an insertion point in, and we ran a tool through there to really understand what is the condition of that full length of that pipeline. We got some good news from that inspection, that there were no immediate repairs needed, but we also understand when we need to come back and take a look at that again. And we'll be moving to the next force main, based on our risk prioritization for future inspections in a couple of years. So far, we've been focused in our collection system assets, because that was the largest portion of our system. We have seen this -- or the picture you can see here, you've seen these sort of implementation plans before on the collection system program tied to our strategic business plan. We've been developing a similar plan for our facility assets. Those are those plants and pump stations above-ground assets. Couple of focus areas include our small project, process development, pipe locating and documentation at a facility, is that underground pipe within the fence, and also development of our continued -- or continued development of our condition assessment program for those vertical assets. And finally, others have been very interested in our asset management program, and we've been presenting it regionally, locally, and nationally. We've been doing it locally at our Kansas Water Environment Association conferences and at other regional state associations. We've also presented it nationally at the Water Environment Federation Technical Conference, and we've even presented to EPA as part of their ongoing inspector training. So, we're not only learning it for us, but we're trying to share it with others out there. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Aaron to start drilling into our five-year capital needs.
Let me ask this question.
Yes.
Remind me, when did the aggressive asset management process begin?
The asset management program that we have today began in 2007, and then about five years ago, we really began the collection system, the asset management program that Patrick was describing. So, we made tremendous strides here in the last five years to go from understanding our system, and as Patrick was describing, really honing in and optimizing what is that right level of investment we need to start making in our system. And with the collection system being the largest portion of that $2 billion asset value that we have for wastewater, that made sense to start there, and so now, we're working to do the same thing on the vertical assets that, as he was describing, on the treatment plant and pump stations portion.
So, have we been able to examine all the parts of our piping system?
We're working toward that, Patrick. We're a couple of years away. Help remind me again.
We are approximately 45% of the way through our system. We'd identified -- our goal is to get every pipe inspected that's approaching the end of its useful life, and so, most of those are those clay lines that last about 50 years, kind of the industry standard, and we are about two years away from getting through that backlog of those older pipelines. We'll continue to push through into the newer pipelines. We should see a much lower number of defects, thus lower number of repairs that are needed when we start getting into the newer PVC lines. So, that, we'd kind of pushed off, because those were lower risk. We're really trying to, you know, narrow in on those high-risk lines first.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Chair. Mr. Ashcraft.
A follow-on to your question, Mr. Chairman. So, are you developing an inspection cycle? Because you indicated that you weren't sure how long. Is that something that you're developing, and is there a best-practice model that you're shooting for?
Yes. Initially, we have an inspection methodology, where some of the defects were coming back
were coming back in 10 years and inspecting those lines. Other defects were, were coming back in 20 years, depending on what that, what shape the line is in. And so that's the refinement Patrick was talking about earlier. Now we have enough data, we're going back to refine that to say, is 10 years that right cycle? Should it be 15 years? Should it be eight years?
I, I ask, I'm not that familiar with the methodology on systems like this. The APWA, you know, does a whole thing on streets and roadways, and it's pretty sophisticated. I take it that your science is, is still developing a little bit in that regard. And I suspect that workmanship is not as obvious, so some shortchanging may have gone on in years past. So I know you have to live with that. A related question. Is this, is this tied to your balanced scorecard metrics and performance system? I, I just didn't see any direct references to that.
Actually, Patrick mentioned one of our levels of service where our target is to have no more than one overflow per every 100 miles of sanitary sewer. So for example, I think it, we have over 2,200 miles in our system right now. So that's about 53 is our target. So we want to be less than 53 every year in terms of overflows per year. So, sorry, and Patrick, go ahead.
I'd be interested in learning more, and we can do that often.
Okay.
I do want to make one. It's, it's 2.4 overflows per 100 mile.
Thank you, sorry.
Not, not one. So.
Thank you.
Chairman, I would like to add that this, the way we are doing asset management is a best practice. You may recall that we got the NACO award last year. And so the comment on still developing, I think that we did, as you said, Commissioner Ashcraft, in the past, we do it every so often, but now we're enhancing, and as Aaron said, in between. So this is, this is one of those programs that we're pretty proud of, and, and a lot of people across the country come to us to say, how are you doing it? So just wanted to make that point.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Continue.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Patrick had the fun slides. I get the tables. So I'll, I'll give a brief overview and highlight of these, but please stop me or ask me if you have specific questions on these slides. So this is a summary of our proposed capital improvement program from 2019 to 2023. In our CIP, we have projects that are currently underway and authorized, and also future projects that have been identified to help support our business plan goals. The five-year total is 200, or $525 million. Just over half of what we have in our five-year window is due to the Tomahawk project. If you focus in on the 2019 proposed capital needs, it's $144 million projected in 2019. About 73% of that is due to the Tomahawk project. Compared to what we were projecting last year, it's in that bottom line, 2018 to 2022 total, we're about $77 million more than what we were projecting last year. That is due to our Tomahawk project. It's just how the cash flow is working with that particular project. We were able to refine that as we brought on the construction manager at Risk, developed that, that construction schedule during our design. So that just refined when we would spend those dollars. If you look at the four-year totals compared to last year, so 2019 through 2022, the total CIP between those two years are essentially the same. We're about $3 million over where we were. We were able to achieve that despite having slightly higher costs than Tomahawk by either being able to reduce CIP projects that we had, or be able to push those out so that we didn't have that impact from Tomahawk. This chart represents the permits sold annually over the last 15 years. Since the low point during the downturn in 2009, our permit sales have continued to trend upward. In 2017, we had 1,356 permits sold. We're down a little bit when you compare that to 2016, but in 2016, we had the Gardner Lake Low Pressure Sewer Project, which had a lot of permits sold as part of that. The next tables, we'll get into a little more detail on the various CIP categories that we have. This particular slide, it represents the expansion of our treatment plant capacity to support growth in our watersheds. The Blue River Wastewater Treatment Facility project shown here, this is to help us with the peak capacity of the Blue River Plant. We're just finishing up the capacity increase on, on a current project, and it'll be complete this year. This is one of those projects where we evaluated data from flow monitoring that we did last year and saw that we could actually push this project out. It wasn't needed. Originally, it was planned to start in 2019, but right now, we're pushing that to 2022, and we'll reevaluate that again. The Nelson Digestor Facilities, this project's going to allow us to process the solids at our Nelson facility and then land-apply them as a beneficial reuse, instead of currently the solids from the Nelson facility are taken to the landfill. And so this will help to reduce the risk that we have with the landfill and the odors that were going on there. And then finally, you see the Tomahawk plant expansion. You'll see the cash flow runs through 2023. Again, our intent is still, at the end of 2021, we'll be treating all the flows at that Tomahawk facility. It's just some of the final construction pieces that are, are shown in, in 2022 and The projects shown on this slide are associated with expanding our existing collection system in order to support growth. I'll highlight a few of the projects. We have a map on the next page that shows you where those projects are located. Blue River 16 Contract 4, this project will remove the package plant at our Executive Airport. And we're sharing the cost of this project with the Airport Commission. We're underway on design on that project now, and construction will be completed next year. And then I'll also point out the future districts line item. These are placeholder dollars for unknown districts in the future. Historically, over the last 10 years, we've averaged about $5 million a year on sewer expansion. And so that allows us to include that placeholder dollars in the out years when we're not really sure what districts may come in, but allows it to be in there to help us protect our, our rate projections. This map represents our best projections of when sewers will be available in our service area over the next 20 years. We've also highlighted the CIP projects from the previous table. We've updated this map since what we had last year, but I'd like to emphasize this is still draft. We haven't met with the development community to get some of the input from them and what we're seeing and projecting. But we have approximately 16,000 acres of vacant land with sewers, and those are the hatched areas in the CMSD or the yellow area, and then an additional 15,000 acres within a quarter mile of sewers, and those are the orange areas shown on the map.
Have we finalized or made judgments about the study we did several years ago in regards to the ridgeline in the southeastern part, Gardner Edgerton area?
That's the Bull Creek watershed, and we, right now, it was that we weren't going to extend service into that area, but we need to revisit that and have a discussion of how that area is going to grow and develop and be served.
Well, but I thought, I thought we had discussions with Gardner, Edgerton, Spring Hill.
We did. We did. We met with all those cities to get a better understanding, particularly once Edgerton was moving forward with, with their treatment plant and to serve the growth that's happening in that city. And so we, we developed a service area map based on discussions with Edgerton, Gardner, and Spring Hill from that time period. I believe that was 2014 time period. But as things continue to change and evolve out there, there's still this area in the middle, as you had mentioned, that's over the ridgeline, that I think the question is, who's going to be able to serve that? It's, it's not a natural, it's not a place that's naturally in anyone's service area. So it's always good to, and that's one of our plans, is to meet back with those folks and see what their intention is.
But the objective is to stay on the north side of the ridgeline and not have to pump over.
Right. Our, right. Our objective, at least after those discussions, was to continue to focus on serving the Blue River watersheds, and so essentially serving the east and the northern portions of the county. That's correct.
Thank you.
Aaron, I had a question on page 18 on Nelson Facility on the Dychesters.
Yes.
This may be the secrecy. I know we're looking at potentially a major project, and I assume if we spend this money, this would be integrated into our rebuild or design. But I asked that question, I assume it would be.
Yes, this will be integrated into that design, and that, that's a good point. Our, our Nelson project's actually in our renewal and rehabilitation category, since we're not expanding that facility. It's built out fully, so.
Chairman. Susan, I just wanted to bring to your attention, this jogged my memory. I had, I don't know what the mechanism is that connects all of these pieces, where Gardner has their, their own and Waste Johnson County way. I don't know what the mechanism that connects those, but there, I was told that there had been a conversation in Gardner regarding building their own new sewer treatment plant on the southeast, what would be, well, depends on which way you look at it.
Yeah, southeast of.
Southeast of I-35.
Okay.
So just, you may want to follow up with them on that and see what they're doing.
Okay, thanks. We'll do that. Appreciate it.
Okay. Aaron?
I'll just touch on a, a couple of the projects shown on the map. Cedar Mill Four, we've completed a study in that area. That's on the northern part of the map. We've completed a study in that area. We've been in discussions with the city, and so we're talking about how we could possibly serve that area. I'll also point out Mill Creek One Contract Two is just north of K-10 and just east of Ridgeview, or where Ridgeview Road will be going. That's an area where there's a lot of interest. We've completed a study there. That's over the caves, the storage caves. And so I would expect us to be back in front of you later this year to, to look at enlarging that area in and, and authorizing funds for sewers there.
I'm sorry, can you repeat where that was? I'm sorry, Chairman.
Just north of K-10 and east of Ridgeview.
Gotcha. Now I know. Thank you.
How far, how far west does our service area extend from Lenexa and Shawnee before we get into DeSoto's service area?
It's west of K-7.
Is it, is it west of K-7?
Yeah, it's just west of K-7. So I think.
Pretty close to city limits, huh?
Yeah, it's pretty much up to DeSoto's city limits. That's correct, which is the name, the road is escaping me. Is that Kill Creek Road out there? It's on the eastern edge of there.
You're in the neighborhood.
Yeah, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So the regulatory driver for the project shown here is the nutrient removal. KDHE recently completed a study that was focused on the reduction of phosphorus in the Kansas River, as we talked about in our study session recently, that affects both our Nelson facility and the Mill Creek Regional Facility. So as part of that, we're having discussions with the state and EPA. In fact, we met with the state yesterday and had a good meeting with them in preparation for meeting with EPA next week, where we want to focus on Nelson first and that large facility and that large investment, and push out the large investment on Mill Creek. The project shown here is more of an interim project, a smaller project, to take care of that phosphorus piece at Mill Creek while we focus on Nelson.
Speaking of Mill Creek, the tunnel is completed and is operating?
Yes.
Yes.
Operating.
By passing the water intake area for Water One?
Yes, yes. And successfully carrying a significant amount of flow during wet weather as we had designed it. So proud, you know, last, if you recall, last summer, we had three significant events, and we had no trouble carrying all that flow.
The renewal and replacement projects are where we focus on taking care of what we have. You know, with the support of the board, we've been able to invest in our existing system and take care of it proactively, which allows us to stay away from those emergency repairs in the system, which can be very expensive. Our goal is to maximize the life of our assets while minimizing the lifecycle cost of owning those assets. So lately, we've been rolling more of our CIP dollars into programs in order to better prioritize the highest-risk assets and our needs across all of the system. Those programs are really in those top three line items. We're focused on the collection system, our force mains, and the treatment plant and pump stations. The assets in these categories are really identified based on age and the risk. That's how we're prioritizing those. There's a process in place to evaluate each asset and when we should actually repair or renew that asset. I would like to touch on a couple of, of projects. Once, the Dykes Branch R&amp;R Project, Design and Construction. It's really a series of projects to address. We've had some force main breaks along Mission Road and 87th Street, and so this is a series of projects to address that, to make sure we can minimize the risk of those force main breaks that are very disruptive in that neighborhood. At first, we'll be doing, doing some repair on the pump station and force main, and ultimately replacing that force main. And the second item, just to point out, the Nelson project is included in this category. We'll complete the study that you authorized in 2019. Again, we're continuing discussions with EPA and the state on moving forward with the permit for that facility. Our other category holds many of our ongoing projects or programs. The asset management program includes ongoing program development efforts, and Patrick talked about some of the emphasis of where we're headed next. The backup prevention program has been very popular since the flooding events that we had in, in July and August of last year, so that we continue to invest in that program. Finally, I'll touch on the relocations for city projects. This is a fund used for sewer relocations, associated with road and stormwater projects when we're working with cities, the county, or, or KDOT. So as part of those projects, when a city has a project, they'll submit those plans to us. We'll review those plans to see if there's any conflicts with our utilities, or if we need to do repair on those, those assets. And so we'll work with them to incorporate that into their designs so that we can take care of both of our projects at the same time, which saves money, and then also saves disruption to residents that are in the area, so that one utility's not doing an improvement project, and years later, we're back in and either tearing up a new street or, or disrupting them again, so. As far as our future drivers with asset management, again, same as last year, aging assets, and we're addressing that with the Nelson facility and, and the Nelson collection system. As far as regulatory drivers, we have nutrient removal, which again, we'll address with, with Mill Creek and, and Nelson, and also wet weather, which touches on, on two things. One, there is a regulatory aspect to wet weather and overflows, but as our, in older parts of our system, as the system ages and we take on more inflow and infiltration, it can cause backups and those types of problems, so. That's where our drivers are for the.
Let me ask you, on the, on the wet weather issue, with Tomahawk Creek rebuild, we were able to do something different. As we look at these other, let's say, the Nelson complex, whenever we get to that point, is it likely that we're going to be able to use some alternative methods other than digging big holes in the ground and storing it?
That's, that's definitely part of the discussion that we're having with the regulators. The idea is to try to, we're seeking an approach similar to what we had achieved with Tomahawk. Nelson, however, is a little more complicated. Aaron, I don't know if you want to speak to that, to the, technically challenging is kind of an understatement with Nelson.
Yeah, where would you dig holes? And where would it store?
Yeah.
Windike County?
That's part of what we're looking at. What are those potential areas where we could, we could do improvements?
Yeah, it's a more, you know, it's a completely built-out, well-established neighborhoods. And so I, and the site itself is tight. There's not an alternative to send flow somewhere while we're reconstructing Nelson, so it's, it's going to be even more technically challenging than the Tomahawk. But that's certainly what we're seeking, is an alternative approach like we did Tomahawk.
I would think the First District Commissioner can figure that out.
Good call, Chairman.
That's right, that's right. Architect, architect.
So this slide, we're just looking at our long-term projection for our CIP, the 25, 25-year outlook. We're a little over $2 billion in that 25 years, what we're projecting. Within this, I'll highlight, we have the ongoing rehab and renewal projects. We want to continue to invest and take care of our system. The outlook also includes the Nelson facility, more in the near term, and then the larger Mill Creek. We've pushed out into that 20 to 25-year timeframe, and again, we'll be working with the state and EPA as part of that schedule and our integrated planning effort. The other major investment I want to point out is the watershed capacity enhancement line item at the bottom of the table. That includes projects or improvements that'll help with wet weather, capacity-related problems, and also system renewal, really focused in the older parts of our watershed. So that does include the Nelson watersheds, also Leewood, Indian Creek, Tomahawk, as well as Mill Creek. And the timing of this long-term project will be further refining as we work through this integrated planning effort and this effort we're working on Nelson right now.
And so we'll use those long-term CIP projections as we are looking at a long, long-term rate projections as part of our financial model. We'll continue, that, we use those so that we can continue to optimize that financial plan for our customers, our rate payers. And so we'll be back in May. We'll speak more to that when we're here to present the financial plan in May. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, let me say this. I, you know, thank you for the type of work you're doing in asset management or managing these assets. It's important that we be in a position to take the correct steps as time goes by so that we don't end up at some point in the future with facing issues that Kansas City, Missouri has had to deal with. And so the ongoing commitment is very important. Let me ask you a question about what I would call soft asset, and that is our permitting process. Can you give us a, a quick update on, on, I, I know that we've made some, some changes or tweaks in the last couple of years. How is that going?
Absolutely. I'll, I'll kind of give you a high level, and Aaron, if you want to add anything that I've forgotten, let me know. One of the biggest things we've done in the last year, so May 1 of last year, we rolled out the My Permits Now, so online permitting system. And so that, that was a service for the development community. Those that are developing and submitting mainline plans or commercial projects, they can submit all of that online, and we can provide comments back online to just the permitting process itself. So residential or commercial building permits that are needed, they can make their applications online. Everything occurs electronically, and then they, they can pay online, and then they can download their permits online. So that's, that is, has streamlined that whole process versus having to submit paper copies of everything for us to review, or have to come in and physically bring a check in and pick up a permit in order to get your project going. You know, we're continuing, like any new system, we're continuing to work through the bugs, but I, I hear good things. We've been out meeting with different members of the development community, and so I've heard some good things about the fact that they can do a lot of that online and not have to actually physically come in. Some of the other things we did, you might recall a few years ago, about two or three years ago now, we went through and evaluated our standards and some of our processes, and so we made some changes there as well, and continuing to review and evaluate those and see if there are any additional updates or changes that we need to make. To try to, we're trying to eliminate some of those big tripping points that are occurring out there as part of that process.
As I recall, one of the issues was sometimes there wasn't a timely communication between the engineer, the developer, and wastewater. Have we been able to, to address those?
We've, yes, we've worked to improve that, so we, we supplement our own staff with consultants so that we're able to continue responding as quickly as possible. The develop, the mainline projects have picked up quite a bit, so I know we've had a backlog over the last few months on those development projects where they're putting in the sanitary sewers. Our commercial projects are, we're well above our levels of service in terms of that. So we continue to work, and as I said, we supplement with consultants to help us so that we're, we're working toward meeting, meeting those levels of service.
Thank you.
Aaron, is there anything else?
I would just add that on the online process, there's multiple parties that can receive information as that's sent out, and it's very easy for them to log in and look at what's the status of their particular project, and we've had a lot of good feedback from that perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bear with me for a few moments here. I do want to say this. In my past life, I had the opportunity of serving as budget, kind of a budget analyst and director in municipal government, and I did have responsibility of water and wastewater. So I've, you know, somewhat familiar with what you're dealing with on a day-to-day basis. But for those that may be watching those, and others in, in this community here, it's amazing that we have a utility with six plants and, what is it, almost 2,300 miles of pipeline. But to the general public, it's probably the, it's the one and probably the most expensive service that government is providing here, county government provides, but it's, probably gets the least amount of attention for obvious reasons. But with that in mind, as I sit through your presentations, and I have through the development to Tomahawk and so forth, Susan, I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate you and your team, because I look at this and sit there for such an expensive utility that we have to keep going. You're not only dealing with today's needs and, and trying to stay ahead with preventive maintenance as well as replacement, but also looking into the future with a Tomahawk coming on, which is going to bear well. It's going to be great for, as we go down the line, as this county grows to, to being 800 and million population down the line. I think you're trying to, and working very hard and successfully so, trying to stay ahead of the ballgame there as we enter that. And to you and your staff, and, and I know, kind of manager, you've been engaged in this on a, on a regular basis. My hat's off to you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Appreciate the support.
He didn't mean 800 million. He meant 800,000.
800,000.
Yeah. My goodness, that was, had me worried.
Catch. Mr. Osterhaus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Susan, Aaron, Patrick, I want to just echo the comments of my fellow commissioners. It's a kind of a hidden gem, you know, is our wastewater system sometimes, but in a lot of ways, modern society is built off sewers and, you know, developments and a lot of that stuff, public health and those sort of things. And we don't have to look far, just cross state lines, see what happens when you neglect those services. And so it's good to hear about all the best practices where we present to the state and to the EPA and to others about what we're doing. Another instance where Johnston County leads the way in a lot of those areas. I did have a question way back on slide 16. That was the 15-year review on growth. Do we have a preliminary kind of first three months of the year, maybe this first quarter? Are we trending upward of 2017? I'm curious about.
I don't have that with me today, but we can get that for you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Just great job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for your support.
Anything else you want to add?
No, thank you for your time and appreciate your support.
Okay. When are we going to have the groundbreaking for Tomahawk Creek?
One week from today, so there should be something going out today.
And it's a 60-degree weather day, right?
I, I am, I am going to make that happen.
Wow. Wow.
What a commitment. I'm tired of snow.
How about Saturday morning? Can you do anything?
No, I, I, it is looking good for next week, so I'm hoping we'll have a good day. So look forward to having you there.
Sorry, Susan, you're already out on that list.
I know. I made a deal with Mother Nature. I hope I can deliver.
Okay, well, thank you all very much. Have a nice weekend. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.